Good morning. Welcome to the Bucks County Commissioners Meeting for December 7th, 2022. We will begin with the salute to the flag, please.
The flag of the United States of America and the Republic of the Philippines. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah, we am gonna, I'm gonna switch the order of the presentations here. At a, at a meeting of the Board of Elections a few weeks ago, there was a medical emergency here in the building with a resident who was coming here, a pretty well-known resident. And it was the actions of our peace officers and staff here at the county, jumping right into action and providing the kind of care that allowed that resident to be here today, which we are very glad of. And, and I want to turn over to, I think, Rich Vona, our Director of Public Safety, is going to talk a little bit about the officers who jumped in and did their jobs so well.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. I want to thank you for permitting us some time this morning to honor and recognize members of the Emergency Services Security Department. I'd like to ask the following officers to step forward. Peace Officer Roland Rogers. Peace Officers John, Peace Officer John Rule. Peace Officer Mark Lewandowski, who's not able to be with us today due to a prior commitment. Peace Officer Dave Smith. And Peace Officer Otis Weathersby. And we'll also be recognizing, recognizing screener Karen Frabel, who's also not able to be with us today because of some medical issues. Commissioners, on November 17th, 2022, at approximately 10:04 a.m., the officer stationed inside the Court Street entrance observed a male enter the Administration Building. And once inside the building, the male collapsed, suffering from what appeared to be a medical emergency. Officers Weathersby, Rogers, Rule, Smith, Lewandowski, and screener Karen Frabel, working together, responded and determined the male was not breathing and did not have a pulse. Officer Rogers applied the AED to the subject's chest and began chest compressions, while Officer Rule provided rescue breaths. After analyzing, the AED indicated the shock was warranted and shocked the individual. After shocking, Officers Rule and Rogers resumed CPR and continued until relieved by central box EMS. The individual who suffered this medical emergency is no stranger to the Administration Building, is in fact former County Commissioner Andy Warren. I've spoken to several medical professionals familiar with this case, and each has reiterated that the actions of the involved officers were timely and properly executed, to the point that Mr. Warren's here with us today. I'd ask that Mr. Warren come forward and say a few words, and then assist me in presenting the accommodations to the officers.
Thank you. I just, before I start, I didn't have a chance to sign in, but I do have something to say.
I'm start, I'm gonna start the third one.
I just wanted to mention two, real quick. The young woman that looks like my daughter is really my wife Elaine, who is most of the time delighted for what you all did. And you know Dr. Jan Wood will mention in just a second. I do want to thank the Commissioners. We've heard often that it takes a village to set, to raise a child. Or I'd like to put a little switch on that to say that it also takes a village, many people, to save a not-so-young child. There were a lot of people, starting with the Commissioners, who made sure that the training took place, that these gentleman and woman knew and had that could swing into action. Because for three minutes, I wasn't here. And to a person, every doctor we had that saw us said, "You're, it's a miracle you're here, because you were at the right place at the right time." Now, many people said they'd take Warren feet-first out of the courthouse. We didn't realize they really meant it that way. I will tell you one other quick thing, and then I'll get on to what I really wanted to say, was... I remember walking into the courthouse, and I, next thing I remember is rolling over at Doylestown in the hospital bed and seeing Elaine some two hours later. I have no idea of anything that happened since then. They, one thing, Elaine tells me this is true, and she wouldn't lie. But they ask you when you're in the emergency room, and I have no recollection of this. Who are you? What's your birthday? What's your name? Where your address is? Do you know why you're here? And I said, "Yes, yes, yes." And they said, "What happened?" And supposedly, I said, "I walked into the courthouse and some Democrats whacked me." Now, I, I wouldn't have said that consciously, but unconsciously it did. The other part that I will say, many people don't realize, if you watch some of the comments that are made in this room between the Majority Commissioners and me and others, you think, "My God, those people must, can't stand each other." I don't, I don't carry a cellphone too often, like right now. And they couldn't find Elaine, because I didn't have my cellphone. One of the people who... One of the people who helped find Elaine and the Middletown Police came to the house was Diane, who called Commissioner Marsaglia, who called someone, who called someone, who called the cops, who called Elaine. So, there's some of us. And sooner or later, America will be far better when we can separate the issue from the person. So for all of you, I thank you, I thank you for the thing. And I will now stop, because when I said it takes a village, a lot of people, the, the doctor said, "Had I not been here or surrounded by people who knew what to do, I wouldn't be here." They also asked me, many people asked me, "Was it to break your ribs? Or did you crack your head?" And the answer to each was, "No, they didn't break my ribs, they did crack..." But because of their training, and because you all ensured that there was the proper equipment, the figulator, all of that worked together. With that in mind, Elaine and I are here today, this is not Elaine, this is Dr. Diane. We will be offering a $1,000 scholarship to a man and a woman who will be majoring in Emergency Service Management at the Community College. Because, many of you may not know, at one time, the 10th largest educational institution in Pennsylvania was Bucks County Community College. They do a great deal there, a lot of good people. And the more people that are trained to know what happens, because there was, I had no warning whatsoever. Not dizzy, not sweats, not tired, nothing. It was just like I'm talking to you now. But because a lot of people invested a lot, I'm able to hear to be a pain in the neck. For very sports of the anatomy. So you all, thank you very much. We're going to thank these people from you in a second. But I just wanted to let you know that this colleague will receive a scholarship for a man and a woman who will be majoring in, because of you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. So at this time, we'd like to present the accommodations individually to the officers. So Peace Officer Roland Rogers. Officer Rogers. Officer Rogers receiving accommodation today for life-saving. Peace Officer John Rule. Officer Rule is also receiving accommodation for life-saving. Peace Officer Mark Lewandowski is not here today. We will present him with his accommodation at a later date. Peace Officer Dave Smith. Officer Smith is receiving accommodation for meritorious service. Peace Officer Otis Weathersby. Officer Weathersby is also receiving a meritorious service award. And screener Karen Frabel will receive the same award when she's physically able. Commissioners, I'd also like to recognize briefly Officer Stephen Capell for his direction and leadership with the training of the Security Department in the first aid, AED, and CPR. Sometimes we forget the training, as Mr. Warren said. That's really the backbone of this department, is the training these officers receive that allowed them to immediately jump into action. In this case, the training shines brightly. These gentlemen and lady did not come to work on November 17th looking to be recognized for their work. But I am proud of these individuals, and I'm proud to be associated with this department. I thank you for your time.
I just would like to, to say very quickly to the officers, thank you. That was amazing, everything that we heard, how you responded. You didn't know what you were coming into that day, as, as Andy didn't. I also, where's Andy? I, I just wanted to add that in the terms of people from different parties getting along, I texted Commissioner Charlie Martin right away as soon as I heard this, and he went into action looking for Elaine as well. So, you know, we, we all are one county, one people. And I am sort of hoping, though, that this means you're going to be only good public comment, right?
Yeah, to our, to our officers, thank you for the good work. Life happened to be that day, life-saving work. Everybody in the county appreciates it. And, and to Andy, my good friend, although we have disagreements once in a while, I am just so happy and thrilled to death to see you here today. Welcome back, and to your wife as well. We're, we're just so glad to see you. God bless. Thank you.
Yeah, and certainly echoing the comments, thank you, you know, to the officers, including the screener who wasn't here, and the officer who wasn't here, and, and the leadership of the entire department, really just making sure that everybody's ready to jump into action, and, and, you know, certainly very few people can, can talk about, you know, that they saved a life. You know, so it's something that, you know, certainly makes us proud. I'm sure you're proud, your families are proud. I know there's a proud little, you know, kind of mini-police officer back there, you know, as well. So he hears, just heard his name. So, but thank you, thank you again. And for Andy, there is still time to sign up for public comment if you want to do that. Okay? All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. Thank you. I think they're gonna do a picture of some type on the WHO, we'll let our communications...
The officers could come up.
Come up here. Andy, why don't you come up here, too? Rich?
Andy?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's gonna be a little bit tough to top that, I think. As some may know, over the past few years, well, I'll back, I'll do a bigger picture, the past few decades, our country has been ravaged by an opioid epidemic that has killed tens of thousands of people every year, continues to kill tens of thousands of people across the country. There are a lot of guilty parties who are finally seeing days in court, and there is some justice being served to some level. One of those days in court resulted in a very massive settlement that is going to bring billions of dollars from one of the manufacturers and three, and a couple distributors to states around the country, including Pennsylvania. The Bucks County stands to receive, over the next 18 years, roughly $45 million to be used to fight the opioid epidemic in, in various ways. Over the summer, I asked the head of our Drug and Alcohol Commission, Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission, Diane Rosati, to chair a... and Alcohol Commission, Diane Rosati, to chair a group of volunteers who could gather information and use their expertise to make some recommendations about, you know, some ideas about how this money should be spent. And so, I'm very appreciative of the work that they did, public meetings and hearings and receiving information in person and over the email and phone calls and using the expertise they had. We had people from different walks of life, from different parts of the county, but all of them had some kind of, you know, connection to this epidemic in some way. And so, I'm happy to say that Ms. Rosati is here, and she's going to give a presentation about the recommendations that that committee has for us.
Everyone, as Commissioner Harvey stated, I'm pleased to be here today to share with you our plan for use of Bucks County's allocation of the opioid settlement plan. And so, the opioid settlement plan actually follows written guidance on what may be or may not be allowable in terms of what could be funded over the next eighteen years in Bucks County. As Commissioner Harvey noted, last May, he appointed a committee of individuals, and those individuals include, the vote on the plan included Rachel Neff, Mickey Kasinger, Bill McVeigh, Elena Hardison, Ryan Schweigert, and Tim Nguyen, and of course, myself. We received significant community input, we had two virtual and in-person sessions as well, and we received input from the community, from residents, from providers, and from other stakeholders, and came up with what I firmly believe is a solid plan for the use of these funds. And I'm going to go through the various potential uses of the funds. We've broken them down into prevention, and treatment, and recovery support, and then administration. These are placeholders of funds. It will be a fluid use of the funds because we intend to utilize the funds in the most transparent and impactful way. So, the first is prevention. And so, the prevention programs that we intend to support will be alternative activities, and that includes programs that may be something like a summer camp that has a drug and alcohol focus, it's not treatment-related, it is maybe an adventure camp or something that can get folks out and thinking about other things that would include a drug and alcohol piece. A significant amount toward, as you can see, community-based mini-grants, we heard from many community members who were concerned that they didn't have access to funds to help make an impact in the community, and we intend to do that. Again, this plan is simply the start, this is our first eighteen months of work. Evidence-based prevention programming, so expanding those evidence-based programs that we know have a scientific basis and work. Expanding our media campaigns so that residents have an understanding of current drug trends, where to turn for help, what resources are available. We intend to establish our own mobile prevention education unit, and shout-out to Ben Salem who already has their own, theirs is called Behind Closed Doors, but we intend to have a county-run mobile prevention education unit that is incredibly valuable for our social service agencies, for parents, for teachers, for the community, and we intend to make that available to the entire county of Bucks. We'll expand Narcan purchase and distribution so that any resident and anyone in the county who is interested in receiving Narcan will have it, and we intend to make that a significant push. A new program that's called Nurse Family Partnership, not new in the country, but new to Bucks County. Many, many other counties already run this evidence-based program that will help our families that are working with children and youth, especially when there is a substance use issue in a family. Expansion of website, many family members explained to us that they had challenges knowing where to turn for help, so we intend to improve our website and make sure the residents, family members especially, know where resources are. And an expansion of women and children's housing, of course, housing in Bucks County is extremely expensive and difficult to find, let alone if someone has a substance use disorder and has young children. So, we intend to partner with children and youth on a particular project that will be located in Bucks County. The treatment services, you see a significant amount of funding going toward the Behavioral Health Urgent Care or Stabilization Unit. Frankly, we haven't landed on a full name for it just yet, but this is a significant project that is in partnership with the county commissioners, law enforcement, Doylestown Hospital, which is where the site will be located, our mental health providers, drug and alcohol providers, the Department of Behavioral Health, developmental programs, Magellan. And we intend to build collectively a facility on the grounds of Doylestown Hospital that will serve the needs of residents who may have a mental health issue, drug and alcohol issue, and certainly, as most residents could have, a co-occurring disorder which is mental health as well as drug and alcohol. I should mention, this is an eighteen-month effort, as I spoke about earlier, this is simply a small amount toward this project, which is a multi-multi-million dollar project. Increasing the lengths of stay and treatment, and, you know, thanks to the commissioners who continue to bring that issue to us as well as residents, to ensure that residents are aware that just because their insurance could run out, or for some artificial reason, they're told that they can't remain in treatment. So, we are going to ensure that residents are aware that there is funding available, we will make sure that residents can remain in treatment as long as they're willing to remain in treatment and they're progressing. And lastly, in treatment, medication-assisted treatment, I should mention that that is to be targeted toward jail efforts, and we have heard Mr. Kratz speak often about the significant effect of folks who are in Bucks County jail who have a substance use disorder, and medication-assisted treatment is meant specifically for folks who are on opioids, who need medications that can be extremely costly. The next category is recovery supports. We intend to expand the already-successful Bucks County Co-Responder Program to the other parts of the county that have not had advantage yet. A drug court probation staffing position that is a probation officer through adult probation to ensure that that program can continue as it has been. Drug testing strips, and that could include fentanyl test strips, xylazine testing strips. Grand family resources, so that residents who are raising their grandkids because their adult son or daughter has passed due to an opioid overdose gets the support that they need, and so will be able to provide some support to those residents. Housing is certainly a significant issue for us, so we intend to expand the reach of our recovery housing supports in Bucks County. We have a big category here, and I see that we have outreach, peer support, case management, and I also should have included specifically mobile engagement services. This is beyond treatment alone. Treatment is so important for residents, but all of the wraparound services and engagement services are essential to helping someone on their journey for recovery. And expanding to a transportation allocation, which we've not done in the past, to ensure that residents have access to getting to drug and alcohol treatment and drug and alcohol services when needed. And finally, under recovery supports, the warm handoff, which is for residents who have experienced an overdose, who are in one of our six Bucks County hospitals, to expand the reach of the certified recovery specialists who are working in the hospitals. And the last category is administration, and that is to ensure, as I mentioned earlier, that we have transparent, impactful, evaluation-based oversight of this project. It is not a small project, and we intend to manage it the most responsible way possible, and that includes the potential hiring of a fiscal manager or fiscal analyst for the project that will be employed by the county of Bucks, but will be overseen by the Fiscal Department as well as by Division of Human Services. And Rachel Neff certainly is a significant partner as we move forward. And finally, project evaluation, to ensure that we contract with an evaluator or evaluators to demonstrate the impact of these programs, to ensure that if they're working well, we can continue them, and if they're not, we'll move on to other types of programs. So, I just wanted to express thanks to the committee, and certainly to the commissioners for your support throughout this process. We really look forward to beginning to launch these programs, and the next step will be that Rachel Neff in Division of Human Services and I will be getting together to determine how these projects are divided and to begin to develop programming and to launch the programs. And I look forward to coming back and sharing with you the impact of the programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners have comments or questions for Ms. Rosati?
Diane, thank you, and to the good work of your committee, I know you put a lot of work into putting this together, and it looks like, you know, a terrific plan. And again, you know, getting people help in whatever area, whether it's treatment or support services, I mean, is part of getting to a place where people can recover. And I, one thing that stood out in my, stands out in my mind to this day, was a young man who passed away in Ben Salem a few years ago. And I knew the family, I had tried to help the young man, and he did get help, and he got, you know, into treatment and had good time in recovery, but unfortunately relapsed, and he was in the treatment more than one time, and, you know, this is a disease that, you know, you just can't give up on. I mean, relapse is part of this disease. And he passed away, and they actually found him in an abandoned warehouse in Philadelphia, in the Kensington section. He had been passed for a few days, and walking up to the casket and greeting his mom and dad, and of course, they were distraught, and what do you say? You know, what can you say to try to comfort them? And I just remember the mom looking at me and said, "We tried everything we could to help him, but it just didn't work." And unfortunately, we hear that story way too often, and, you know, certainly, and hopefully, some of these services that we are going to be providing with this money might stop a scenario where a family from losing a loved one here in Bucks County, it might stop that, hopefully many times over. So, thank you, I think this is going to be a tremendous asset for the county as we fight drug and alcohol addiction, and thanks for your good work, and thanks to everybody who works in recovery. I mean, they are all heroes in my mind, thank you.
Just briefly, I want to thank you as well. It struck me the other day, I attended my first funeral when I was twenty years old, and I'm looking at my daughter at thirty-two, and she has literally been to dozens, starting when she was fourteen, people who have lost their life, including her best friend, to the opioids. So, I am so grateful that you're going to do this, we need to create a different future so that young people don't have to be involved or watch their friends suffer, so, thank you.
And obviously, thank you for your leadership on this, for, you know, for a long time now, your leadership on drug and alcohol prevention throughout the county. But, you know, I do think that this provides, much like the transition report that was done back in 2020, this is a great roadmap for the county to follow over the next eighteen months. And as you heard Ms. Rosati say, there are different agencies, different departments here in the county that'll be implementing different things, and so, those will all, each of them piece by piece as they're being developed, will come to the commissioners to be voted on, and move forward. And just to kind of talk on a couple things, just to add, you know, that this is, everybody's involved in this. Ms. Rosati mentioned that there is a statewide panel, a trust essentially, that oversees how this money is going to be spent, and the creation of that trust, sort of the final decision-makers in many ways, was something that was part of the settlement agreement, and different representatives from all over the state are part of it. Different regions of the state were asked to choose people to represent multiple counties, and for southeastern PA, which kind of extended from Lehigh down through Delaware County, the representative is Commissioner Duralamo, who, you know, I have obviously worked with now for three years and have a tremendous amount of respect for, and he's earned the respect of anybody who's ever worked in this field. And so, I was happy to sort of nominate him, and he was respected enough by other commissioners from predominantly not his party, when we think about southeastern PA. The fact that he was recognized by that kind of goes back to Commissioner Warren's comments earlier about recognizing what people can bring to the table regardless of party. So, we're glad to have him on there, and the crisis center that was mentioned is something that Commissioner Marsagli has been pushing very hard for and an integral part of as well. So, this is something that obviously has all our attention, and it has for a while, so we appreciate all the work, and we're looking forward to moving on these things. So, thank you. All right, we'll move on to public comment now. Remind speakers who have signed up that the public comment is, this is agenda items only, there is a general public comment later. First name on the list, I see Mr. Mackhouse has signed up for agenda, just, Mr. Mackhouse, so you know that you have, because you have opioids here, we're not voting on the opioids, so technically that's not part of the agenda. I don't know if there's something else you're going to be speaking on?
Well, the opioid, you had a presentation on that.
Well, yeah, but it's not something we're voting on, so it's not really an agenda item we're voting on. Well, you can, okay, you can, sure, come up if that's what you want to speak about, that's fine.
Ed Mackhouse from Buckingham. I'd like to thank you for your presentations on opioids and saving, and Andy Warren is a former commissioner, and what you've done, I'd like to compliment Commissioner Gene DeJura for his recognition for his work on drugs, and he recently got recommendations. And I, as I go through all this program and agenda, I'd like to compliment the commissioners about all these items that you handle in getting all this money for all these different constructive projects and things. And so, I think, and it's good to have the public comment, the feedback. On the drugs, like here it says, provide drug take-back medication education programs. I think education programs are important. So, there's never-ending problems with people, like for drugs, everyone's, people have a suicide family, drugs in everyone's family, there is some relationship. There's no magic solution, a pill or drug that's going to solve all our problems. I think there's a balance between science, medicine, and dealing with things. So, I like, been to, so, Alcoholics Anonymous, I think that's good, where people acknowledge their weaknesses. I think our arrogance, like the first commandment is, have no other god but ourselves, I think a lot of our problems come from being arrogant and thinking we can solve all kinds of things. So, we have to be able to accept the things. I like rational emotive therapy by Albert Ellis, who says, "Most of the problems that people have come from the use of the word must. We can't must everything, we can't do and use the words all. We have to recognize that we're human, we can only do a certain amount of things, we have to accept that human and everyone else is human." And so, I think there's a balance, and there are emergencies where you have to have intervention to restrain people in schools, society, and I think it's emergency services, there's a limit to what we can do, and I think that all these people cooperating together, and we need to bless the peacemakers, people who can see the differences and resolve them and work together, we can cooperate. So, I thank you, everyone, for what you're doing, and to listen to different comments and opinions. Thank you very much, and your good work.
Appreciate, thank you. Beth Curcio?
Hi, Beth Curcio, Warminster, Pennsylvania. Just an observation, I've asked this before, if you guys could get us the agenda quicker, a lot of us work full-time jobs or run businesses, and we come home and we're tired, and we only have a couple hours to look at these agendas, and they're just, they don't give a lot of information, they give an amount and what department they are and everything else. So, for us, we would really like some more information on that. I'm going to go to the Housing and Community Development one, and my question is, these things that are for the county people, are the illegal aliens, are they included in these housing, in this housing and all these programs? Because if so, I think that the people of Bucks County have the right to know how much is going to them, how much is going to each family. After all, we have senior... After all, we have senior citizens, parents that live off social security and everything else. And is that really fair that somebody, you know, we can't save the world. We just can't save the world. And, you know, closing our borders would be the smartest thing for the drugs and everything else. But we tend to just keep putting money on top of everything instead of solving a problem. I think elected officials forget, you were elected to solve problems, not to just keep throwing, you know, fire on them. Because that's what happens when you don't get to the root of the problem. And I do agree, we're so far away from God, country and family that we think that we as humans can solve everything and we cannot. So there's so many things on this and I only had like this morning to look at it, so I'll just save my other self for comments. Thank you.
Thank you. James Nilson, you signed up for the budget. We're not, there is a budget meeting at noon. I don't know if, we're not voting on the budget right now, but I don't know if there's something specific about the budget that you had that is, that is on the agenda?
Yes, in reference, two items for your budget line. One is Springfield Township Supervisors applaud you in what you're about to-
If, if you could just come to the, yeah. Yeah, there are budget adjustments too. I'm just not sure what, which thing you're speaking on. Okay, certainly.
Jim Nilson, Supervisor for Springfield Township. We, the Supervisor of Springfield Township applaud you for what you're about to embark upon at this meeting and endorsing the ARPA money and EMS and the contracts you're looking at. I'm also a representative of Ubrums, which is Upper Bucks Regional Emergency Medical Services. I'm their treasurer. All the EMS services struggle and we, in the Upper Bucks area, most certainly appreciate the stand that you've taken, some of the changes that you've made to accommodate what's been recommended to you. And we like that in our community very much. We appreciate what you're doing and what you're about to embark upon today. In reference to, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I looked at the public comment sections for your 2023 budget and when would be a good time for me to ask a question of that budget?
The budget meeting at noon, so it would be public comment, yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Warren?
Thank you. I wanted to bring up a subject that could be taken many ways. I mean this in the most respectful governmental process. The regular agenda, item five, Roman numeral five. I, I guess that's a quickly over $3 million, some millions of dollars for emergency management, education, recruitment, et cetera.
5.5.
Thank you, if that's, I was wondering what the number was. Obviously, I appreciate that investment of funds. What I ask for from the elected officials, that's $5 million this year that will be, I suspect, will be put to good, to good use. My concern is, obviously, with the ARPA money, we're just, it's there, we're going to spend it. This happens to be probably, in most cases, a worthwhile expenditure. But someone ones in America are going to pay for that. You all are our eyes and judgment as we invest ARPA money ad nauseam in many cases. Please review where it's going because in 2024, December, it's going to end. And then all of a sudden, money that has been from, invested in ARPA funds are coming to an end. And does that set up false security for organizations that all of a sudden don't have $5 million coming from them? Don't have signup bonuses for that, as some of the other money went. So I'm asking, again, your due diligence with the investment, the oversight of the ARPA money. People are going to pay for it. We are, I am now for another while, and our children. Please seriously look at where it's going and I am not specifically saying this is not a good investment with all of those organizations. But it is some interesting that every single organization has a degree of funding. So it's that balance that I'm asking my elected officials to see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, just commenting on a couple of things, certainly when it comes to housing and community development. If, I guess, if we're first, if we're talking about following the words of God and certainly housing, those who need housing would, would certainly fit in the category of, of following God. In terms of the money we're spending for housing, I mean, if we're, if people are aware of illegal immigrants receiving housing money, I'm, you know, that's certainly something we'd like to hear about, not something we're aware of. We're spending about a quarter million dollars on housing, using organizations like Habitat for Humanity, Family Services, Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. The Bucks County Housing Group is on here, I think, too, somewhere, they've been on the past rather. So those organizations do good work and we trust them with spending the money the way they're supposed to. The EMS, we're going to be hearing in a minute, presentation from Audrey Kenny, Head of Emergency Services, talk about the EMS money we're allocating. In Pennsylvania, the, the funding for emergency rescue squads, EMS is really at the municipal level, not the county level. Certainly the county plays an integral role in coordination and, and communications, et cetera, and training. But it really is up to local municipalities to fund the emergency rescue squads and contract with them, whether it's nonprofit ones or ones through hospitals, whatever. About 22% of municipalities here in Bucks do not allocate money through taxes to emergency services. For whatever reason, they've chosen not to do that and that has led to some difficulties in terms of staffing and coverage. Certainly not something that, you know, that is advisable. The, the, what we are looking at here is something that originally came out of an idea the, the commissioners had, working with local municipalities. The offer was made, I think it was last year, we communicated with municipalities that we would contribute some ARPA money to rescue squads if local municipalities used their ARPA funds, part of, part of them to rescue squads, that we would match whatever they wanted to do. And while there were a few municipalities that were open to that idea, most were not. And so it kind of fell to the county to help our rescue squads who are, who have been struggling, as Commissioner Warren said. The struggles go to the state level, it's something that we're aware of and I know they're aware of. The insurance, health insurance lobby is very strong in this country and in this Commonwealth. And so if you are transported in a hospital or to a hospital, your insurance company will, sometime will send the money for reimbursement to the person who was transported, not to the rescue squad that provided the service. And so in many cases, the rescue squad then has to hire an agency to collect that money, which as you can imagine is not always easy to do. So not only are they having to struggle to do that, but even if they do collect the money, they're paying a percentage of whatever they're supposed to get in the first place to the collection agency. That requires a change in Harrisburg, a state law change, which we've been asking for as commissioners, the three of us now for a couple of years. We've made it clear to our legislative delegation, both parties, that changes need to happen if we're going to help our rescue squads stay active and vibrant. We talked a little bit about housing, housing's an issue too, because working, doing the kind of work they do, and we just celebrated some peace officers for doing lifesaving work, this is lifesaving work these people do every single day all over the county. They don't receive the pay they should, quite frankly, because the funding isn't there. And if you're going to afford a house in Bucks County, it's a little tough to do that on the salary of an EMS worker, which is why many of them work multiple jobs. So a lot of it's prioritization in this nation, but we are doing what we can to help. And so we'll get to a little bit more of that as we talk about, you know, with the regular agenda and, and hear a presentation from Ms. Kenny. So, just another comment, just something, just a note on the agenda, which I thought was interesting. Item one, area agents on aging, one E, I should say, is approving a contract to provide Federal Medical Improvements for Patients and Providers Act, a pilot program. I think it's worth noting that this is a pilot program that is being run in two places in the entire country and we are one of them. It's our area agents on aging and another area agency on aging somewhere else in the United States. So it says a lot about the people who work here at this county and that department, the fact that they are one of two people, one of two organizations in the entire United States that was chosen for this pilot program. So we thank them for their work. Any other comments or questions on agenda or how about the minutes from November 16th? No? Okay, all right, that's the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, move to the regular agenda. We've talked a little bit here already, maybe stole some of the thunder that Ms. Kenny has. But she's going to come up, Audrey Kenny, to talk a little bit about this program and how we got to where we are and, and what this program's about.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners, for having me here. I want to specifically thank Larry Luce from our emergency services office and Kim, who have been laboring a lot of this, this effort on behalf of our squads. And I have Evan Lusenkov here with Meadwell. He's going to have a few comments in just a moment. I wanted to talk a little bit about the items on the consent, or on the regular agenda today. We have 16 nonprofit rescue squads here in the county. Four of those agencies are hospital-based and they're operated by those local hospitals. They operate through 30 stations around the county and respond to roughly 60,000 calls per year. They transport roughly 40,000 people as a result of those calls. Our EMS agencies continue to struggle to find funding, personnel and recruitment has been a challenge, as we've all seen in any job that we have here in the county. And so these are contracts, they're all reimbursement based and the agencies will be reimbursed for eligible expenses. There are three areas that we have focused on. We worked with our solicitor's office and our auditing firm to find out, you know, which were the best uses of these resources and these funds for our squads. But aid to impacted nonprofit organizations was a, was a key indicator for us. Our EMS transports account for 75% or more of their revenues annually. And during COVID, their call volume dropped, so their revenues dropped as well. So this gives them an opportunity to kind of level set some of their books a bit and, and get themselves back to, to a better position financially. Recruitment and retention, this has been a, a key topic for us in, in our field and it provides a funding stream to allow for retention and retraining of some of the current workforce. And it improves some of the exposure for this, this role in the public safety sector. This is one of the jobs that people don't really realize is a job. And so we made it a point to try to work on recruitment and retention. We've been out at a lot of career fairs, talking to people about this important role and this will help to fill some of those key seats. And then EMS education support, often it's-
Upper Bucks Regional EMS, Ryan Panko. Our member organizations could not be more thankful of the support of the county commissioners by allocating a portion of the ARPA funds to emergency medical services. Among the many things this does for the organizations, it, it does an incredible thing for the community, the residents, the visitors and the business owners of Bucks County, because this is going to help to prevent what could be a wider public health emergency. If the EMS system fails, you, you've got nothing. So like hospitals that serve big Medicaid populations, EMS is the, the primary healthcare safety net in the county. And we respond to everything without prejudice, without a patient's ability to pay. If somebody calls 911 and requests an ambulance for service, the ambulance is going to come out, treat them accordingly, take them to the hospital and then in 10 minutes usually have to turn around for another call. In Bucks County, the last count is there are 21 open full-time paramedic positions and that's a running count in the last two years. And with attrition, with many of the older and senior providers getting out of the business, that number is going to probably double in the next three years. So the recruitment and the retention piece of this is critical. The reimbursement piece is critical for the EMS organizations that were impacted by COVID in numerous ways, including the, the overtime due to the attrition of staff. And what this Board of Commissioners is doing for emergency medical services should, should set the example for the municipalities across the county who know and understand that it is their responsibility to provide for emergency medical services. This will help us, hopefully give us time to work on our relationships with the municipalities to get to where we need to be. And I can tell you personally from our experience with Newtown, we just successfully won a referendum to double our tax revenue. So between the ARPA funding and our increased tax revenue next year, we're going to be a very strong organization and help to support our area organizations around us. So on behalf of the EMS Chiefs Association, the EMTs, the paramedics in Bucks County, this does amazing things for emergency medical services. Again, it's unprecedented support of EMS in Bucks County and we cannot be more thankful for your support.
Okay, comments from commissioners?
I would just say thank you. I sit on the Health Council, so unfortunately I hear all too often about how much difficulty our rescue squads are having. So I do hope this kind of tapes things together. I would encourage all municipalities to take a look at how they are funding their rescue squads. It is their responsibility and in the next few years, this money will run out and we'll hope they'll be able to take over.
Yeah, and, and as has been said multiple times, and it really has been sort of Larry Luce, who works for the Emergency Management Agency here in Bucks, who really carried this so far and, and with, and just pushing the idea originally and, and working with, with Evan and the chiefs of the EMS squads and trying to figure out a way to, to, you know, to, you know, patch this problem up. But, you know, it's a shame he couldn't be here, but really thank him for his work. And that's it, no more comments. Well, is there a motion to approve the regular agenda, which does include the 5.5, roughly $5.5 million for the rescue squads in Bucks County?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move to budget adjustments. Mr. Boscola?
Good morning, commissioners. For your consideration today, three budget adjustments for 2022. As we enter December and start closing out our books for the calendar year, I will be presenting several budget adjustments for departments that are exceeding their approved budgets for '22. This morning is adjustment 16 for the constables, 17 for the Health Department and 18 for enterprise resource planning. Those adjustments will draw on the general fund to cover their additional expenditures.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Boscola? If not, is there a motion to approve budget adjustments 16, 17 and 18?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, move to personnel actions. There is one adjustment to the personnel list. Again, this is just the commissioners' list. Item 13, the term risk management should be removed. The Salary Board just, a little over about two hours ago, just almost two hours ago, made that change to that particular position. So it would just be HR generalist, no risk management. If, no other comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve the personnel list for commissioners as amended?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board appointments to the Drug and Alcohol Commission, we have three reappointments, Mr. Dale Ketti, Mr. Josh Buchanan, Ms. Anne Marie Murphy. All terms will end 12/1/2025. Is there a motion for those three reappointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Other civics, commissioners making contributions to the American Red Cross for $3,000, Bucks County Community College Foundation for $2,000, Delaware Canal 21 for $2,500, the Hickok Historical Society $2,500 and the League of Women Voters of Bucks County for $1,200. Is there a motion for those contributions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officer's report, Ms. McKevitt?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a, a couple of events coming up over the next few weeks. One is the workforce, under Workforce and Economic Development, we have a wed talk on December 14th. It's a partnership, is the new leadership. And the speaker's name is Ty Bennett. And you can sign up- And you can sign up for that on the county's website. There's also another session coming up for Economic Development, it's an information session with all the economic development organizations to explain what services they have. And that, I believe, you'll be kicking off on January 11th at 9:00, and then I believe it's Zoom for that event. And both of those events, you can sign up on the county's website for. And then I have a reminder for the county employees, in the spirit of the holiday season, the children and youth, or our children and youth staff headed up by Chantel Gammon. She advised me that the Giving Tree will be placed, I believe, on the second floor this week. So if you're interested, please take a tag. They can always use gift cards to target Walmart, Giant, and Wawa. And try and be generous to the older children. This seems, we tend to favor the younger. So if you could do that, that would be great. Chantel does a fabulous job on this program, and she works very hard to keep it going. They also have Adopt a Family program, so just keep that in mind during the holiday season. And if you need more information about that, please reach out to her. And that concludes my report for today.
Okay, thank you. Solicitor's report, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll begin by reporting that the board met in executive session on December 2nd with staff to discuss a personnel matter. And then again, yesterday, for the standing executive session with staff and legal counsel to receive information, as well as updates on pending and anticipated litigation, collective bargaining negotiations, as well as personnel matters. Finally, Commissioner, just to provide an update on our growing CLE program. First, I'm really pleased to report that we had a very successful continuing legal education class. I think it was our fifth that we've done since we started this last year. And like with many things that we do, we are much more effective when we work with allies, friends, and partners. And so I'll begin by thanking our district attorney. Two of his attorneys who handle right-to-know matters, Tim Lutz, and I hope I'm pronouncing his last name Eugene Sevillik, joined Dan Greaser from our department in presenting a really informative presentation on the law concerning the release of records and privileges and all the sorts of things that all government agents have to address in balancing transparency with protecting legal privileges and exceptions, which is exactly the subject matter of the next CLE that's going to be presented. And we're very, very honored that when the Bucks County Bar Association presents what they call the Marathon CLE Day, where folks can actually receive half of their year's credits, this is what attorneys have to do every year to maintain their licenses through coursework. The section on data privacy and the HIPAA law, which is extremely complex subject, extremely complex subject matter, I think it's historically been, with respect to legal work, the most expensive work that the county has had to outsource and pay for by the hour. And they've asked Elizabeth Aquendo from our department, who has really built some expertise in this area, to teach that class, which is going to be next Tuesday, along with some really great speakers for the other courses on December 13th at the Bucks County Bar Association. So I know I certainly look forward to learning a lot from Elizabeth and the other presenters as we continue to provide legal education, not only to our own department, but to the legal community writ large. And that completes my report.
Okay, thank you. Move to public comments. This is general public comments. Mr. Mackhouse?
Ed Mackhouse from Buckingham again. Talk about the election. I like the drop boxes, the way they're secured in Bucks County, but I still disagree with having, like a nurse submit multiple ballots from people in the nursing home. I think they're sort of a captive audience. Should be a family member from the person in a nursing home, individual ballots represented that way. I think the election integrity is very important. We had election in Georgia. I noticed that it always seems like that the Republicans submit their ballots in the rural areas, and then the Democratic areas, like the big cities, they waited to see how many votes they need. And so people believe that they, like Mayor Daley's tradition, is waiting in the Kennedy election, he bragged about it, that they stuff the ballots afterwards so that they have, know how many ballots they have to stuff. Like you're playing cards, everyone should show their cards at the same time. There shouldn't be the Democrats, big city can be suspicious of making multiple ballots. So I think election integrity is a factor that divides the country, calling all the millions of people that voted for Trump fascist, is not constructive. Trump has done more for Israel than anyone else. The fact that he may have met with antisemites, he met with the Arabs and he got the Arab Abraham Accords, the first time people have peace between the Arabs and the Jews. If he meets with antisemites, I think it's to try and bring people together. Because I believe that democracy, politics solve questions, not always go to war with people who'd say things that we don't disagree, we disagree with. Trump shoots off his mouth with Putin and all, but we don't go to war under Trump. So I think we need to look at both sides of the issues and solve it peacefully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Crystal Gilchrist?
I sent innovation along before reading, but here's a paper copy.
Ms. Gilchrist is just passing us information, which she had sent to us earlier via email.
Good morning. Sorry to approach when I wasn't supposed to. My name is Crystal Gilchrist. I'm a regional planner. I actually live in Montgomery County, but my career started at Bucks County years ago when Margie was with the Planning Commission as well. Since last September, when Hurricane Ida blew through, we have been working on a proposal to do a coordinated, comprehensive stormwater plan for the Perkyomen Creek watershed, much of which lies within Bucks County. The East Branch, the Unami, Ridge Valley Creek are all part of Perkyomen. So I wanted to give you an update briefly on what's been happening so far. I have been speaking to all four of the counties over the last year, the Planning Commissions and the county commissioners, in terms of promoting this type of a study. We have broad support from the municipalities and some other organizations in terms of this type of approach, which is comprehensive and includes the whole watershed. You'll see in the paperwork that some, I mean, some sections of the watershed have been studied, but it's never been a comprehensive approach for the whole watershed. So since we started the project, Representative Joe Webster from the Lower Perkyomen was able to get $1 million in the current state budget. So we are off and running in terms of moving forward. That $1 million is probably enough to conduct a Phase One data collection effort. It will also allow us time to put together county agreements so that all four counties can work together towards this. It'll allow us to do a full scope of work for the full comprehensive study, and it will allow us to figure out how we're going to fund the future phases of the study. So I will be coming, I have spoken to your Planning Commission in the past. I will be coming back to the county probably after the New Year to start working on how we can, all four counties, Bucks, Berks, Lehigh, and Montgomery, can work together towards this effort. My time is up. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Okay. Well, we're going to give some time to go through this, but we appreciate your work on this, and certainly will be working with the Planning Commission and doing what we can to help.
I will be at Buckingham.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Priscilla Linden?
I rise to express gratitude, deep gratitude, for all that you and your staff do to preserve and protect the safety, health, and well-being of the citizens of Bucks County. This is the first meeting I've attended that seems to reflect the spirit of peace, love, compassion, the Christmas spirit, or shalom, or assalamualaikum, rahimsa, or heping, or heywa. With hope that the New Year can start on such a positive note, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Beth Curcio?
Beth Curcio, or Mr. Pennsylvania Election Integrity. We saw a little video when we saw just sitting here, where Commissioner Harvey told us it was all right to break the laws of Pennsylvania about harvest. We're dealing with a uniparty. We're not dealing with Democrat, Republican. We deal with a uniparty, and we all know it. And, you know, Commissioner Harvey always gives us these long, drawn-out things about a 100-year-old man getting his right to vote, and then these people in a nursing home. My mother's been in a nursing home for five years. She's not able to make her own decisions without, we just don't have her vote, because we don't think it's fair, even though she's just as conservative as we were. We wouldn't do that. So I'd like to know then, when you and Diane certified them, were they 1,000 Democrat votes, or were they 1,000 Republican votes? That you, you know, you already told us what you were going to do ahead of time. We do not have any election integrity. Until we get rid of the machines totally, get back to smaller polling places, and have the day off, and have everybody able to vote and not get frustrated, and then the mail-in Pennsylvania goes on for like a month, it's absolutely ridiculous. The other thing is, you did, and so why, just finishing the voting thing, so why are these old people that don't even know where they are, why does their vote count more than mine? Because it's washing out votes of people that are working citizens, trying to make a better community. So, you know, you really need to look into that. Why are you so afraid of fair elections? Yes, your people that agree with you, but they don't realize we're going to end up like Venezuela. We have lost more and more rights the last couple of years. The other thing is, you did not answer my question about are illegal aliens getting some of these monies to get into these homes and everything else? I'd like that question answered, and how much money, and who determines how much money they get. Thank you.
Dr. Ganther?
Good morning, commissioners, and to the COO, and to all of you who are working hard for the citizens of Bucks County. I do not come on election integrity. I do not come on anything on the agenda, other than to say thank you so much for the partnership that you have provided to us. Coming in on my year and a half, I must say that my last time that I was here to speak, I unfortunately received a phone call that my father had a heart attack and had suddenly passed away. And I do want to say thank you to the commissioners and to the COO for your outpouring of love and support of me and my family during that unfortunate time. But knowing my father's spirit for life has really reinvigorated me to be steadfast in the work that we're doing in order to support every single citizen, every single individual who is represented in the county of Bucks, that there is an opportunity for them to do better and bigger things. And so we are excited about the work that we are doing. Commissioners and COO, we will be back in the spring to share with you some of the items that we are doing. But let me highlight two. Number one, I have been invited to go to the White House next week, because we are hosting two efforts. One, to help veterans in developing CDL training certification, and Afghan nationals who are here, who will help the United States military to also get CDL training so that they can find jobs and to support their families. And I would like to say that Bucks has been the premier institution that has partnered with the federal government to train and develop individuals here in our community. So I'm very excited about that work. I've got three seconds. And number two is we have spring, and we have winter. The time is up, but I will say this, and I'll get out of the way. We want to make sure everyone knows, we have winter intercession, so those families whose sons and daughters are coming back, they want to make up some courses and give it in for free or for a low cost, please reach out to us, and we have our spring semester coming in January. We do have some gifts. We want to say happy birthday to Commissioner Marsaglia, we wish you well, my good secretary and sister, and say happy holidays to everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Just because her timing ran out, and she, you know, kind of got, the band played her off almost a little bit. A couple, the important thing that was mentioned by Dr. Ganther, well, one of the important things was mentioned after she, after the mic cut out. For students who are coming back from college during a winter break, if they're looking for classes at the community college to fill some things in or get some extra credits, there are winter classes they can look at. And also, the spring semester enrollment has started. I know that already, because I paid the bill for my daughter, so I know that happened. But, you know, for anybody looking to do that for spring semester, you can certainly take a look at the community college website and find out some of the great things you can do there. Okay. Just in terms of the comments, I mean, you know, obviously already addressed the housing issue, but the, certainly when it comes to voting, I can always speak for myself when I say that I think that if someone's in a nursing home, you know, if they are able to vote, I think they should be able to. I don't, I'm not going to discount everybody who's in a nursing home and say they can't vote now. So if we need to find ways to help people vote, I think that's our job as Americans to do that. So my response to a couple of the comments that were made. Any, let's see, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Dijraalma?
Okay, thank you. It's Diane, is today your birthday?
No, I got, I have another couple of days.
Oh, it's not today?
We're celebrating it today.
We're celebrating it today? Well, I just want to make sure I wish you
Month-long celebration.
That's it.
Just want to make sure I wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Whatever you're going to do with your friends and families, enjoy.
Thank you.
Have a good time. I just, very briefly, I, you know, a lot of times we talk about the problems that we have, and, you know, and that's part of our job as elected officials and people that work for the county, to solve problems and to help people. And, you know, we might disagree on some things, but I think we all have the welfare of the residents of Bucks County in mind whenever we do things. And as we come up to the holiday season, and just not meaning Christmas, because there's a lot of different religions that are celebrating different holidays. And as I go around the county, I mean, I see so many groups and organizations and churches and schools and different people that are really trying to help out people here in Bucks County who are in need. And we do have a lot of need here in Bucks County. We really do. There's a lot of people struggling to pay rent, a lot of people struggling to provide food for their family. And I just want to say how proud I am of the groups and organizations here in Bucks County that are trying to help those who are in need and less fortunate. And I think we should all be very, very proud of that. And as well, encourage people to get involved, to contribute, to help these organizations and groups and schools and churches who are trying to provide things for the holidays, maybe, or just maybe provide people with food, to encourage you to help them out. Because there is an awful lot of need here in Bucks County. And I say this all the time, everybody doesn't live in a $500,000 house here in Bucks County. We have an awful lot of need, and so let's all get together, especially around the holiday time and the New Year's, and do what we can to help people out. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Marsaglia?
Just a couple of things. The first thing is, apparently people are watching our meetings, because I've got a bunch of happy birthdays already, so that makes me feel good, people are watching. And happy birthday, Dr. Ganther. Second thing was, I just wanted to recall that Commissioner Harvey went to our nursing home on Veterans Day, where you met a lot of veterans who gave, you know, risked their lives and gave up for our country. And I absolutely think they deserve the right to vote, as long as they are able to vote. And then the next thing was, there were some comments earlier about the ARPA funding. You know, we are being judicious and wise in how we are using that money, and one of the things that we are using it for has been already brought up, the Crisis Center. We discovered things through COVID that we did not have adequate coverage We discovered things through COVID that we did not have adequate coverage for people who are having a mental health crisis if they needed to go to the hospital. So we are building a center for people who are having a mental health crisis or a drug and alcohol crisis. That's a really important thing that this county needs to get better at, and that's how we're going to do that. We are building a forensic center, so that somebody who is in that emergency center or in a hospital and has, I guess, acts out, does not have to be arrested and sent to the jail. They will go to the forensic center. Another great way we are spending that ARPA money. We are also building a lower Bucks Government Services Center. We have outgrown the one that's there, so we are using the ARPA money to make sure that we can replace that. Huge, important things, and that's what it is. We're making up for the things that didn't get done that showed all the problems that happened during COVID. And the last thing I wanted to say was to Commissioner Didirolomo. I'm happy to tell everyone that Commissioner Didirolomo received the Spirit of the Commonwealth Award. This is at a recent dinner of the Drug and Alcohol Service Providers of Pennsylvania. These are people from across the state of Pennsylvania who gather for a dinner every year. They're providers, they're people who deliver services, and they thanked our own Commissioner Didirolomo for his work. One of the things they said, besides other lifesaving work he did, he was really responsible for making sure that Narcan got through and is able to be used by all the municipalities throughout the state. I believe 60,000 doses were used in 2021, so think about the amount of lives that were saved by that. And Jean, so many people, so grateful to you. And that's, again, the reason that you were chosen by the lower, by the Southeastern Counties to be a representative on the trust. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I appreciate the kind words, but as I said tonight, I received the awards. I mean, I think the real heroes in this are the people who work in the field in treatment and recovery. I mean, they're the real heroes. I mean, they're working at this every day, and they're saving lives and putting families back together again, and they're the real heroes in this, and they should have all received an award, not just me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I also want to echo, happy birthday to, a little belated birthday to Dr. Ganther, birthday last week. Happy 29th birthday to Commissioner Merseglio, in a couple of days. And just want to, on a comment, there was a comment made earlier, which I found kind of ironic, you know, we can't save the world. It's an interesting comment on this day particularly, because we've already saved the world. It was called World War II. And anyone who doubts that, while yes, we had allies fighting and around the world, anyone who doubts the role the United States played in preserving the planet and destroying fascism and changing the way the world looks, needs to go back to school, pick up a book, or take a look at an article online. It's ironic, obviously, today being December 7th, 81 years ago is when America was pushed into World War II. And so it's, I think it's interesting, the attitudes that sometimes we have, which I've heard too often over the past, you know, couple decades, people who don't have faith in the power of this country to move mountains and make a difference. And I think it says a lot about the attitude you have. Certainly, I think the three people up here and others who work for this county do approach problems and look at them as mountains to climb, and then after they get to the top, they look for the next one to climb, and they keep looking for ones to climb. And so I think the attitude, you can't save the world, you know, is an old saying, that if you think you can't, you're right. So I think we prefer to think that we can. And I think there's a world of difference between the people in this country and this planet who think they can versus the people who think they can't. So I want to thank everybody here for all their work, certainly echo the comments Commissioner Didirolomo made, taking a look at nonprofits around the county, you know, churches and synagogues and houses of worship and other nonprofits and the work they're doing, especially this time of year, you know, when the giving season is here. I know the, I'm sure newspapers launching their Give a Christmas again, if they haven't launched it already, so certainly take a look at that, too. And, you know, think about others, and think about what you can do to make their season brighter, and then moving into next year as well. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.